Programming on WCS TV is brought to you in part by a donation from the Middle Tennessee Dr. Pepper Bottling Company, serving McMinnville and Warren County since 1938.
Programming on WCS TV is brought to you in part by a donation from Bridgestone. Bridgestone, your journey, our passion.
This time I'd like to call the order of the meeting of the Warren County School Board. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, second?
A second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. This time I'd like everyone to stand and ask Ms. Best to leave the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
This time I will ask Bonnie to present some recognitions.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a couple of recognitions to present. At the recent school board Fall District meeting, had three board members to receive certificates. Ms. Best received her Level 3, I think, is that 2? Level 2 certificate, so we want to congratulate her. She was at the meeting and received her certificate there, so we wanted to recognize her. Mr. Holmes was not able to be at the meeting that night. He has received his Level 4 boardmanship, is that correct? I think Ms. Best picked that up for you. So we want to recognize you for that and the work that you've done there. And then also, we have Mrs. Martin has received her Level 1 boardmanship award. And that was in era that she didn't get that at the meeting, so we wanted to make sure that we gave that to you tonight, along with your pen that you can wear. So congratulations, congratulations. We appreciate all the work. I think the work to get those levels entails going to several after-hours meetings and workshops and making sure you go to all your academies and things of that type. So that's an annual thing, so we appreciate the work there. We want to make sure that we got everybody their certificates. I think that's all the recognitions that we have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Now, operations report?
Operations. First of all, in your packet, we have the Safe Schools Act. It's an annual document that we have to provide to the state. Mr. Johnson has been working on that before. I think this year Ms. Dodd took over with that. And the SAVE Act document makes sure that we have all of our emergency plans in place, all of our assurances, the things that we need to send to the state and our emergency response plan. So this is kind of the Cliff Notes version of that. I have that document in a two-inch binder in the office and have gone over that and everything is in order with that, so I just ask that the board approve that document.
Alright, everybody has a copy of the SAVE Act compliance package. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve this SAVE Act compliance package.
Alright, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And we had our meeting, annual meeting, this month. Ms. Dodd, Vicky Dodd, is going to be our safety compliance person and will work with Mr. Johnson through the SROs and will be attending some training that he attended last year for us. And they'll work in conjunction to make sure that everything's being done the way it needs to be. And just to give you a little update about our SROs, we're all, they're all in place now and they have done a safety audit of each and every building, given that to Ms. Dodd, of the things that we can do to improve safety in those buildings. And we've already started taking some steps, you know, that we can take through our maintenance department to make our buildings a little bit safer. And so they're doing an excellent job and appreciate their work. The next item is our turnkey insurance program. So this is kind of a three-pronged approach, so I need to hook up my computer right quick and then we're going into that report. While I'm getting that hooked up, I'll talk a little bit about the process for that.
If, you know, this time I believe everybody knows Scott Hill in the back.
You can introduce Scott.
He's representing Scott Hill.
He's representing Scott Hill. We wanted to try and our board retreat, we had talked for several, several years about trying to improve benefits for our schools and our employees. And we started kind of the process of looking at our health insurance as one way that we could look at the cost of health insurance, bring that down to a more manageable level so that all our employees could have those benefits. And as we started looking at that, we went into the process of looking at our voluntary benefits and our vendors and how that process had kind of gotten out of hand, just to say, you know, the least, over a period of years. I think currently, our bookkeeping department is reconciling about 20 different vendors every month, from everything from life insurance to voluntary cancer plans to car insurance and everything in between. As far as retirement plans, 403B plans, 401K plans, things of that type, I think we have six different vendors that sell within the school system. So what we wanted to try to do was to try to get one vendor or company that would work with us to provide benefits and look at those benefits on an annual basis and to make sure that we were giving our employees the best opportunity to purchase products that were quality products for the lowest price that they could get and best benefit. So that's kind of what we did. So Scott and I had had a conversation, started really a conversation early about what his company could offer. And as we had continued in the conversation, one of the things that we also wanted to do was to develop an online onboarding system so that all of the plethora of paperwork that you have to fill out when you're employed would be electronic. And it would save our folks here in our compliance department time and we could put everything online. And Scott was able to come with a solution for that. So with our bidding process, we had to put that out for bid. We had only his company, we put that out for bid for 10 days. We had only his company met the specs when it was returned back for bid. We had two other companies that did not meet the spec. And, you know, that's what we put out for bid was a turnkey voluntary benefits package to include all of those things. So tonight, I think he's going to be here just to kind of answer questions as I go through it, but I wanted to kind of show you first just a short four-minute video and that will explain a little bit about the electronic portion and then I'll get into the other part.
Meet Maxwell. Maxwell empowers you to engage with your health and well-being through a beautiful paying experience, a powerful administrative backend, and a convenient mobile app. We know that the way benefits are introduced changes the way that you think about those benefits, about your employer, and most importantly, about the health and wellness of your family. Maxwell meets you where you are, streamlining access to all your benefits, helping you navigate the healthcare system, and making it easy to manage your health and wealth, leveraging data along the way for more informed solutions that cut costs and improve well-being. Let's have a look. Maxwell's benefits platform is engaging enough that you'll want to use it all throughout the year, not just as an administrative system, you only need to visit when you have to sign a form or go through an open enrollment. Maxwell has totally reinvented shopping for benefits, so it's more like shopping online for things that you love. With Maxwell, you can enroll in traditional benefits like medical, dental, and vision insurance, but that's not all. You'll also gain access to other products and services that are perfect for your unique lifestyle and needs, like telemedicine, emergency childcare, fitness devices, or identity theft protection, all bundled together in ways that make sense for you. Maxwell's decision support tools and intuitive marketplace of products make it easy to choose benefits that are perfect for you and your family. Your employer might provide those at no extra cost, allocate a certain dollar amount for you to spend how you choose, or make them available for you to purchase on your own. Maxwell's shopping experience is the same for everyone, whether your benefits are employer-sponsored or not. You can even enroll in individual products from the public exchanges and check to see if you're eligible for subsidies. With just a few clicks, you're able to compare medical plans, choose your extras, and review your order before checking out. Once you've confirmed, any forms you need to sign will be totally paperless and you're all set. It's that easy. Maxwell makes open enrollment a piece of cake for your HR administrator, too. The administrative interface makes sure that all the carriers, vendors, and systems your company uses can communicate and share information seamlessly. Not only can you keep the payroll vendor and HRIS you may already use, Maxwell makes those systems even more powerful by integrating with top providers. No more stalking you at the water cooler when you haven't finished your elections or printing out a forest's worth of forms every time a new employee joins. Maxwell's built-in form signing technology and email communications saves precious hours for both you and your HR team. When plans come up for renewal each year, Maxwell makes it simple for your administrator to add new products or adjust the current ones. It even helps your company comply with healthcare reform regulations through reporting, sending notices, and tracking that you were offered affordable coverage. Benefits aren't only important the one day of the year that you're enrolling in them, so why would a system stop bringing you value after open enrollment ends? Maxwell's mission is to help you when you actually have to use those benefits, as well as keep you healthy throughout the year. That's where the mobile app comes in. This is where you access all your benefits information and get one-click support to help you navigate the complexities of the healthcare system. The app acts as a virtual benefits card storing all your benefits in one place, including your policy numbers, copays, deductibles, and more, all in a clean, simple interface on your phone. You also get a convenient concierge service right at your fingertips. The concierge can recommend physicians, compare costs of medical procedures, and schedule appointments, snap a photo of a confusing bill or insurance claim, and the concierge will do all the work to resolve any conflict or payment problem on your behalf. The Maxwell app can also stream in fitness activity from your wearable device, so you can see your progress and redeem rewards. Your employer can fund the reward store with the amount and type of gift cards that are perfect for your team. When you work with us, you get the trusted benefits expertise you need and incredible experience shopping for, enrolling in, and using those benefits. What are you waiting for? Get Maxwell.
Maxwell is the company that Scott, I think, is using or is partnered with to do the online onboarding for us. So what I've worked with him on so far is getting all of our forms, all of the things that we have to do annually, where we have to sign off on our employee handbook and things of that type. But principals, right now, the way they're having to do that is they have to, you know, make sure that everybody has a copy of that or has access to that and that they have to, you know, sign off on the forms, do that. What they can do now is they can go in online, everybody will have access to the portal, and they can just click the checkbox that they have signed in and that they have access to the things they have access with. So that way our HR folks here, Ms. Pierce and also Ms. Austin, can see that from her end on that little dashboard and know that everything is complete. So it'll save them time here doing that where staff does not have to keep running back and forth and bringing, you know, paperwork that they need when they correspond with them. To the principals, save them time from having to run all of that stuff down. So that's a couple of the advantages there. So I don't know, Mr. Walker may want to talk about that. But I think he has more important things to do than, you know, running down paperwork. So that's one of the advantages of that. You know, it would be for all of our employees, it would be customizable to us, you know, that's a pretty robust system. Obviously, we wouldn't use all of that all at once, so we can build that as our relationship continues to grow, you know, with Scott's company. But he's able to produce that and I think it's a good product. The cost, I think I sent you, you have a proposal, I sent you the Cliff Notes version of the proposal and I think you have a copy of the proposal right there on your desk. But currently, the first year of the product and the onboarding procedure and, you know, the voluntary insurance programs and benefit programs would be about $3 a person for our employees. So around $28,000 will be the cost on the front end. Then that would drop to $2 the next year. So, you know, there is a fee to get that up and running, there's a fee to get that started and get that going. So that kind of brings me to the second part of that. The voluntary part of it would be simply just voluntary for our employees. If they want to take advantage of those benefits, they can. If they don't, they don't have to. We don't pay for any of those things, the employee wouldn't pay for those. If they want to get an plan, they will get a cancer policy, they will get a life insurance policy, any of those things, they pay for and just like they do now, you know. With the plans that we have right now, if the employees want to stay with the vendors they have right now, they can do that, it just won't be payroll deducted. They can contract with that company. You know, our proposal would be, and I think in a contract would be in January 1, would be our cut point, we'd move forward with the new program and those that are on the other program could move over or they can stay in the program and work with that vendor on their own. So they're not going to lose any coverage that way. The second part of that that we've, Scott's also and his company have also worked with is with our health insurance. I have a couple of handouts for you. This first handout is the new premiums for and benefits for the new insurance plans. And then the last two pages is a gap insurance spreadsheet. And we've had that discussion, I think, at our retreats. If we could purchase, if we could get a gap insurance program that would supplement the state's insurance program and fill in the gaps and lower the cost, would that be something we want to look at? Well, we found a program that will do that. So I'm going to hand that out to everyone and... Okay. So this is the new program for, you got that one? Okay. This is the new program that the state has come out with this year. And there's four options. There's a standard, a partnership PPO, there's a standard PPO, limited PPO, and then there's a health savings CDHP or a savings plan. That's a new plan this year. The coverages, and, you know, we won't go through all of the coverages on there, but the coverages are in the back part of this program. Again, each employee has the opportunity to choose whichever state insurance plan that they want. They can choose the partnership plan, they can choose the limited plan if they want. You know, the motivation for us to take a look at this is in these documents. So I'm going to pass these out as well and we'll look at them a little bit more in detail. Alright, the second document that I gave you, the yellow, that's got the yellow boxes in it, gives you the total premium, the employer cost, the employee cost, and then the number of people that we have on the insurance right now. And then on the right-hand column, the classified cost, which is a little bit different than the teacher cost, okay? So on the second page, what I've done, if you'll kind of flip the page to the spreadsheet there, I think it might be on over, yeah, third page, third page. The third page, I've given the detail of what are the premiums that are paid each month. So you can see in the partnership plan, how much out of pocket is the employee cost, how much out of pocket is for each one of the plans. The R cost, if you look in that center column where it says system cost for monthly premium is 170,596.09. That's how much we pay per month for employee insurance. Annually, that's $247,153.08 is what we pay into the state every year. So what our encouragement would be is this, if we can ask each employee to look at their own personal situation and the gap, the limited insurance plan is the lowest cost plan, but it has higher deductibles and a little bit higher copay. The gap plan is designed to fill in those gaps, so if employees move to the limited plan, they can have the same coverage as they would with the standard and the partnership plan for lower costs. So if we had 50% of our employees take advantage of the gap and limited plan, we would save over $200,000 a year in premium cost that we could take and put back into the insurance program or wherever the board wanted to put that. On the second, on the next page, if we had 100% move on the last part down there, we would save $422,000 of cost, of insurance costs, just in premium. You know, the next couple of pages over there are for our classified personnel, which insurance is a little bit higher for them. So if they took advantage of the gap plan and the limited plan, then on 50%, if you look down there at the difference at the bottom, we would save about $15,000 a year with them. And then if 100% move, we would actually be paying more of their insurance. So we would be paying about $2,000 more for them than we would the other. But the last page is the kind of the bottom line, I guess you'd say, of that. And it kind of shows the system cost, the employee cost, and the total premium. So system cost would be 419,428 less than what we're paying right now if we had 100% move. Employees would get, in fact, in their pocket, would get $264,000 back in their pocket because they're not paying higher premiums. The benefits are virtually the same. So if you go to the doctor, for instance, and you have a $25 copay on your current insurance plan, I'm on the partnership plan now, so if I go to the doctor, it costs me $25. If I'm on the limited plan, it costs me $35 to go to the doctor. But if we have the gap insurance plan along with that, then they're going to reimburse 10, so a doctor visit now's cost you $15, okay? So that's just one example. You know, in that benefits package that I gave you before, it has the benefits plan for Symetra, which is the gap plan in there, so you can kind of take a look at that at your leisure. But, you know, when we were talking about doing that, we were looking for a company to do, you know, just that. Scott found that company for us. And, you know, with the health saving plan, it even gets a little bit lower cost. Now, there's, the benefits are a little bit different with the health savings, it's brand new, I don't have as much knowledge about that as, because I've not experienced that and it just came out and just literally the last two days, we've been really talking about that. Putnam County Schools just voted to do the same thing that we're looking at them with the same company. So their employees are going through that in the open enrollment period right now. And I don't know, Scott may be able to answer, the school systems, how many other school systems have they...
I think they've enrolled like six so far, just in the last three months. I know he told me they did three in the last two weeks in Putnam. I think they actually enrolled Putnam County last week with their employees.
And I actually, I talked with Jerry Boyd, the director in Putnam County, last night, myself, and he sent me their package and it's the exact same contract that, you know, we would be looking at. So, you know, what I wanted to do was kind of throw that out, you know, to kind of get some discussion started about those programs now. The open enrollment period starts October the 1st and ends October the 30th. So what we would do, if we can get the board's blessing to proceed with this, is our contracts right now are, we've gotten those back in, Robyn hasn't had a chance to look at the gap insurance plans yet as far as the contracts go. But we've got a schedule made out, starting on Monday and running through October the 1st, to bring in all of our staff to the middle school from 3:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon and explain the whole process to them, just kind of like what we explained to you. You know, it's a choice, we're not encouraging, we're not cutting any benefits out, we're not cutting any plans. If employees want to stay on the standard plan or the partnership plan, they can do that. If they want to move to the limited plan with the gap insurance, then they can do that. You know, the benefits of that would help, you know, the employee with a lower premium, it would help us with lower premium. And then what that does is allow us to take that money, put it back into the insurance budget, and hopefully the next step ongoing would be to continue to lower those insurance costs, because, you know, that's what we hear continually from employees, is that we need to lower those costs, we need to lower those costs and have the same benefits. So it's taken a long time to get there, but I think we're there with that. So I'll just answer any questions that you might have about those plans, if you have any.
I'm not sure I understand this. The portal, the portal is just used for additional options? It is also used for other items that we put on there?
Yes, it could be used as an online enrollment system for the employees. Our intent was to put the voluntary menu on there and then load on your state plan on there so they would have access through the virtual benefit card on their phone going further, going forward, since we're not actually doing the enrollment of the state plan. So that's going to be more of the employee portion of it. So that's gonna be more of the employee portion of it. I think the other side of it's gonna be, from an HR standpoint, they're gonna be able to really streamline a lot of those activities, as Bobby mentioned, you know, with the online forms, when the people are being hired. It's really called an onboarding process. So that's, I think that's gonna have its big impact on the organization as a whole, in addition to just the availability to access their benefits easier. And we're hoping it's just gonna streamline several different tasks for the employees and the employer HR department.
So if we went to this process, they can go on there and choose what they want?
Yeah, absolutely. It's gonna be like a, the first step we would do, as far as the products, if this is voted forward, we're gonna review and assess what products need to be offered. And then we're gonna go to the market and probably go to about six or seven companies, start a negotiation process to see what that menu is gonna look like. And once the menu's built, then we will roll it out, you know, through, there's a process that get emails and say, you need to log in, and it's gonna be a shopping experience like there was shown on the TV or on the screen. And they'll, it'll basically queue them through there. It actually keeps that with pre-tax and the whole bit, so when they get through, they'll see what the pre-tax savings were, what the cost was for the things they wanted, and then it actually, then they just finish it, and it's done electronically. Then they would be able to access these benefits year-round to see what I have. We think the phone app is gonna be a really big deal moving forward for people who do have smartphones, that I've gotta add this app on my phone, so I can just pull up and look at all my benefits, because I never know what they are anyway, you know, don't have cards. So, they'll be able to access all that basically remotely from their telephone. So in a nutshell, that's what we think it's gonna be able to accomplish.
So it's really kind of two separate, you know, things. It is, and it's, you know, it's Scott's company helping us to do the onboarding process and the voluntary benefits package and those things. And he's been the conduit, really, to get us to the gap insurance plan, who is another rider of that insurance. So it's kind of helped us, you know, with that. So like I said, the cost for, to continue to move forward with Scott and let him do the onboarding process, and us to get the voluntary benefits package in place, is gonna be about $3 a year right now, $2 a year next year. But if we can save $200,000 here, then our cost of $28,000 is gone. And then, once I think that, we explain that to employees about the insurance plan, and we see folks, you know, either deciding to take that or not deciding to take it during the open enrollment period, then we can see where our money is gonna be as far as that goes. And then hopefully, in the next year, we can budget, you know, a little bit more strategically and see if we can lower the insurance premiums, which in effect gives those employees a raise. You know, the other thing we'll have to look at is those who don't take the insurance and how we, you know, affect them. So, you know, we'll have to look at that.
If I may add one other thing. On the exhibit there, there's one other thing that's included in that, that we think's gonna bring a lot of value that they're not experiencing now, is that each employee will be enrolled in our employee advocate program. And what that is, is they basically never have to call the insurance companies for issues. No matter whatever products that we're representing, they'll call a plan administrator in my office. So they get a, an EOB that's not right, the bill's not paid correctly, they've got any issues with those products, they call a plan administrator in our office that works on resolution, basically from start to finish. So that's really been a huge part of our benefit offering for the last sixteen, seventeen years. And we think it's gonna be a big deal for them moving forward, you know, with those things that they have, they're not gonna have the hassles, for lack of a better term, you know, calling the insurance companies, you know, that's, so each person will actually get a card saying what to do and who to call if they're in our office. So, that's included in that $3 fee.
So, what I would be asking the board to do is this. I think Robin's looked at the contract for Scott, and he, we've got a copy of that for everybody. But I feel like, you know, it's, the contract is good, we've kind of hit all the items in a nutshell of pretty much what we're gonna be doing and the cost of it. You know, I'd like to see if we could move forward with that part on the contract. Like I said, the max, the max will be twenty, about $28,000, $3 an employee, you know, there to move forward with the onboarding process and the voluntary benefits package.
I mean, max is?
Yes, yes.
I know that it works really well when you go out to, you know, send this to the teachers and everything, having somebody at Scott's office to call direct and talk to them when you do have a problem.
Oh, yeah.
You know, without having to, you know, go around the circle and things. It's a good selling.
Good, good. Well, Scott's planning, if we move forward, he's gonna be with me all week and tweaks, so.
I say this to the insurance that I have, what our company does, is this onboarding process, and I think people will understand the insurance more than they ever have before. I actually understand what I have and what it's going on. But the onboarding process is huge. I think that's minimal cost for what you get for it. You know, most of your time spent trying to get people to understand what they're actually getting. This system will, it looks very similar to what we use, and it lays everything out before, explains everything, and then having that direct contract, I think, will be huge.
And I think contracts in one year, you know, one year agreement, we'll continue to look at that on an annual basis as well.
Right, so we're looking at, are these two separate contracts for the onboarding and the insurance?
No, it'd be, well, the insurance, the, we're not through with the gap insurance contract yet, we haven't got that, so we really just need the contract with Scott for the voluntary benefits package and the onboarding package.
Right. We have a contract before you for the contract with Scott Hill and Company. The motion?
No motion.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close, like sign. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And this contract, you know, I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, but it's personally, it's the same contract that was in your packet that I gave you, you know, reflects those same things. We did make about two or three little adjustments that Robin wanted to make on behalf of the school systems. Scott was gracious enough to make those, and so I think we've got a good contract to move forward there. Now with the gap insurance plan, what we need to do there is work on that contract a little bit more. We've got that in late today, so Robin will need to look at that. But if you wanna, if you feel like we need to move ahead with that, which would be my recommendation, like I said, it's not gonna hurt anything to do that, to just see if employees are interested in going that route, we'll move ahead with that, meeting with the employees on the week of the 28th, and then we can gather those numbers back. And then in the October meeting, we can bring the contract with Symetra, which is the company, and we will know more hard numbers about who's gonna be in the gap plan, who's not.
Question.
Okay.
403Bs are listed under the scope of services. Will their 403B be listed on this Maxwell?
It could be, depends on what vendor we end up using. We're gonna try to streamline and get it all on there, if it will be allowable to use a security product or a retirement product to be formatted and delivered that way. You know, if we can simplify and do it, we will. If we won't, we'll have a backup, you know, process of how we're gonna do that.
And just so everybody's clear, just wanna make sure everybody understands that what we will do is, once we begin the process with Scott, which will probably be next week, to get that process started, start building those menus and get the paperwork that he needs in place, then we will notify our current vendors that, you know, as of January 1, we're moving forward with another process, and that those vendors will have to work with the employees on an individual basis. And then we'll come back to the board annually with this, you know, process to see if we, you know, like what we're doing, want to continue to do what we're doing. But it'll be a huge time saver for our folks that are dealing with a lot of things right now, because they're only gonna have to deal with one company, probably, you know, 25, 26 companies, everyone. So, they would really appreciate that.
Will we, so in October, will we have a rate?
For?
For the gap insurance?
Yes, yes, we'll have it in October. And we may, it looks like that, you know, it picks up steam, I know what we've seen or what Scott has been told and what I've been told from Putnam County, is they're really liking the new plan, and a lot of folks are wanting to go to the new plan. And books, these books, just like what you got, that I've given you tonight, are all going out to employees now. So, they're getting those, they can evaluate those. We've got a PowerPoint ready, we're gonna explain all of that, and then we'll start getting a form back from them, an enrollment form that says, yes, I wanna go this way, no, I don't wanna go that way. And then we'll know what our numbers look like and get a contract in place and bring it back to the board.
Any last other questions?
All right, thank you a lot. That's, we appreciate that. I gotta get my ducks back and roll. Can roll in the gap one? Well, they can choose, but the, effective, they, they can, they can choose which plan they want during the open enrollment period, but the coverage doesn't start until January 1. So, yeah, so they can, they can decide when we'll be there. But we'll have the contract, I've got the contract, we can start taking on that. All right, so we have that, and we're gonna get to work on the gap insurance plan. I'll just bring the board up to date on one other item that we're, we're working on, that we're probably be bringing a contract. We hoped that we would have the contract today, but we don't have it yet. But the Affordable Care Act, we have to do some reporting at the end of the year. And the, I met with Financial Management Committee last week, and the company, they are using a third-party vendor to help with their reporting of Affordable Care Act. We looked at another vendor that I felt like was a little bit lower cost and a little bit better vendor on our side, that has worked with school systems in the past. And their, the company name is Worktown, Porchtown. So we've been on the phone for the last few days. Actually Scott helped with that as well on his own time, free of charge, so appreciate him, you know, helping us out with that. But we're working on a contract, Robin's been working on that for the last three days. But we will have to have a vendor in place pretty quickly to pull data out of our management system to be able to report to the IRS in the proper way. So we'll be, I probably need to come to executive and we'll bring it to the board in October, but we've got a deadline and we've got a hit on that one. So the county's got theirs, the cost of the, the cost of the vendor is probably gonna end up being about $7,100, and it's a two-year contract, one year look back and one this year for reporting. So we've got that in place, so we're working on that. As soon as we get that, we'll move forward. One other, one other item, Mr. Walker had brought to me. He's got his Color Guard program with the band and his Winter Guard program. And in your board packet tonight, you see the, the supplements, thank you very much, supplements for all of the coaches and all of the sponsors. He would like to split up the Winter Guard, which performs in the, in the winter, and the Color Guard, which performs with the band. And we would need a separate supplement for the Winter Guard. The supplement would be 2,400, 2,424, it's a standard supplement for the Winter Guard sponsor. And, you know, we can cover that, because we're not using all of our supplements right now anyway. So, I probably, since that's not in your packet, if that's the way you'd like to have it, I'd like to make that recommendation, just add that supplement for the Winter Guard.
We have a recommendation to add the Winter Guard supplement, supplement package. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close, like sign. Motion passes.
And I think that's all we have for operations. Mr. Chairman?
Right. This time, student advisory?
My name's Trey McLeigh, and I'd like to tell what will be happening at the high school. The rules have changed for CMD, the, on October 9th, we have a homecoming grade game. And on October 8th, we have a pep rally at the high school. And the WCHS has completed the plan testing Wednesday.
There was 501 sophomores that completed the plan exam. Just a reminder about the high school's Facebook page and their Twitter account. I wanted to let any of the board members know, if there's anything you want posted on there, just let Erica Bragg or Jacob Dunn know, and then we'll get on there. News from FFA, anyone interested in purchasing fruit, nuts, meat, and various other items need to contact, I guess it'd be most forward for FFA. Kim Minix has taken over the drama club. Drama's always been very good over the last few years, and I hope she can just make it all better. The CNA class participated in the senior day at the fair. Students did a wonderful job as companions and helpers to the Rantry residents. This is the second year we've had the pleasure of helping the senior residents. FCC LA, the students that went to Nationals in Washington DC in July brought back, I think, gold in elderly endearment, silver for imagination library, silver for Go Red for FCC LA, silver for autism and the environment, and silver for hospitality and tourism. And FBLA is selling car fresheners with various cents for $1 each as their club fundraiser. They're also selling yard signs, which is $12.
So you want to have any questions for student advisory? Will the first child's report?
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, we will have curriculum and achievement. Mr. Zekman is out of town, so we'll always go get Mr. Zekman. We have GB, LB, IHA, IHAB, IHE. All of these are on second reading, and from my understanding, there's no change from the first reading. Is that correct?
There was one more change in GB, LB. It said practitioner, we changed it to probationary, which was where it was supposed to be in the first class, and that's the only change in any of the policies.
All right. So we have these four policies presented on second reading. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve four policies on second reading.
Have a motion to approve all four policies on second reading. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close, like sign. Motion passes. It's all for curriculum and achievement. I want to ask if it's appropriate that we move student advisory to the very beginning, so that they can get out here. I know sometimes it's fine, but sometimes they're gonna have a lot of homework and things. We can move to the very beginning of the agenda next time.
Okay, we'll just put them before, right after they've been seen, okay?
Okay, right. All right, we'll move along to Philip. Facilities and resources.
During our committee meeting of the facilities and resources, Mr. Clemmer was here and reported on the rebuilding programs that are happening right now. Bobby Bray Gymnasium addition and renovation, all the demolition is complete, a temporary canopy connecting the school to the gymnasium has been constructed, block is in place to the bearing elevation, interior selection and shop drawings have been repaired, fire rated ceilings are in place in the locker rooms, and the project, project is progressing. Warren County High School Athletic Building in addition, the brick and colors have been selected, roof decking is in place in addition, fire protection piping is in place and tested, foundations and grate beams are in place. foundations and grate beams are in place on the athletic building, lots of concrete is in the ground for this facility, decked inside the weight room. The weather has helped them, um, to, uh, move along, uh, primary fittings in, is in place, and lots of underground work has been done. Urban College School addition renovation, lots of grading, foundations for, uh, the addition are in place, the material and color selections have been made, 6% of the floor slabs has been poured, the loading deck has been connected. Uh, that's all I have on that. Also, out of the committee, a motion was made and seconded and voted on to purchase 1.3 acres located on Bushville Highway, joining our Urban College property for $12,000, which is below the appraised value, um, from William Barnes, uh, and I make a motion, um, that we purchase this property. Do I have a second?
Okay. We have a second. Is there any discussion? All right, I certainly wanna appreciate Mr. Barnes for the purchase price that he's offered. Um, I think that with that plan totally being on the highway and him considering the school system and the needs that we have, uh, was offering an extremely fair price there, um, so we certainly wanna acknowledge that. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign. Motion passes.
Also, out of committee, um, we gave, uh, Donnie talked about the erosion problem at Dibro's Bank, and we need top soil. Uh, we, um, made a, a motion, uh, and agreed upon that, uh, give him permission to, uh, get bids for this erosion problem. So I wanna make a motion that we do, uh, give Donnie permission to get bids for this erosion problem that Dibro.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, continue with the bidding process for the erosion issues at Dibro. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign. Motion passes. I, I'd just like to take three minutes before we finish. Did we pass you up?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Three minutes. Um, I believe everybody has a copy of our, um, latest universal screening results, these are from the fall universal screening, which concluded, I believe, on September 15th. Um, I also provided just a copy, you, you all received this last year, um, but I thought you might wanna reference the two together, um, just kinda as a very broad overview, um, our composite results for the district. We went up comparing this fall screening to last fall screening, we went up in kindergarten and third grade, we went down, um, in first grade and second grade. Uh, one thing about, one thing that I'll say about first grade and second grade is, if you look at the scores there, it seems that there's a, a outlier, a, a low-end outlier on, in both of those grade levels. So, we need to take that into account. I don't know exactly what's going on there, um, what we'll do is just have conversations with principals and make sure that if those kids are a little bit lower, that we're applying interventions and, and really looking at, at, um, our tier-one instruction and make sure that those kids are getting what they need, so we can kinda increase that percentage, um, and hopefully get the first grade and the second grade measures up to where they need to be, um, by the winter screening. Um, the kindergarten increase, I don't know if that can be attributable to the parents that we had going through the Ready for Kindergarten program, I would hope that that would have a little bit to do with it. We had about 30 parents through all of the age range courses last year. Um, again, I shared it at a previous meeting, we, um, are receiving 210 kits through the grant this year. We've got, this is new information that you haven't heard, Sharon Hargrove is gonna be, um, working as our ready site coordinator. So her primary initial role is to make sure that we get all those kits filled, um, which was a concern when we knew how many we're getting, we're pushing it through pre-K, um, she is reaching out to a lot of the daycares, she's reaching out to the families that she works with at the Family Resource Center, um, we've spoken with some coordinators of, um, some of the housing authority complexes, so hopefully we can get some programs going there as well. Uh, I spoke with our regional director today, and, um, all indications are that we're going to receive some additional kits in the 3, 4 age range, uh, for Ready for Kindergarten. So we, we're, we're posed very well this year, um, to serve the parents that we'll have, um, the parents of the children that we'll have in, in the coming years. Um, some things that we've got going on through the school system this year that I'll tell you about very, very briefly is, um, we're looking at some additional training that we may receive, that we'll kinda have the capacity to spread throughout and provide to teachers whenever it works, whether it's the, um, early dismissal days, or whether it's our PD days, or whether it's really going in very heavily next summer and providing these teachers in, in the K-3 grades with some really high-quality training, um, we're gonna have greater capacity to, to do that, um, I expect, if, if things kinda flow through as, as planned right now. Um, principals are also starting, I'm starting to hear more conversations with them about really getting in and analyzing their data, looking to see how we might strengthen our K-3, um, classrooms, to make sure that our, our reading instruction really is strong, that we're getting as much as we can out of those extended reading blocks. So hopefully, we're just on the verge, we've been kinda static in our third-grade scores the last three years, hopefully we're just on the verge of, um, seeing an increase from, from all of our efforts. Um, but at the same time, uh, it's gonna be a new test, and that presents additional challenges too, but, but we're working. Any questions? No questions?
Mr. Chairman, apologize for that.
Mr. Paul, Mr. Thomas. Near legs, sort of hitting that, I apologize for that.
We got it anyway.
I'm sorry. Uh, I do have one, uh, to, okay?
I know what our committee's, Mr. Thomas.
Okay. Uh, just wanted to make note while Duane and Jay are, are here, that October the 1st, uh, this coming Thursday is our first early release day. Uh, so, uh, we have four of those built into our calendar for professional development for the teachers, so school will be released at 1 o'clock on Thursday, the 1st, and we appreciate it, maybe we could get something in the paper, maybe Sunday and Wednesday, you know, letting everybody know that, out on the radio, appreciate that. Uh, we, uh, we'll put that on our website as well, with just to have a good reminder that, you know, school's gonna be let out, buses will be running, and teachers will be staying till 3 o'clock, working on professional development, so just wanted to make note of that.
Are we doing automated phone system?
Well, there, we were, here is, there's a problem with the automated phone system. Uh, it seems to be a federal law that was passed prohibiting, uh, calls that are un, unconfirmed or documented. So what we're doing, we met with our leadership team this morning, or this afternoon, we have to send a form out to every parent, get it signed off, that these are the numbers that we can call, uh, and then when we get that back, then we can use it. Now, we can use the calling system in case of emergency. So if it's, uh, emergency, school needs to be let out, or some form of emergency, we need to notify parents that they can use it, but for this, we can. So, uh, probably, you've noticed you hadn't received calls from, you know, festivals and school meetings, things of that type, has to be emergency, so, that's a new law, it was passed this year, a federal law.
Check the [inaudible]. Are there any other reports?
No, it was on the agenda, I didn't call it. 90% reading goal was on the agenda, it was my, my fault for not calling it.
Yeah, no, it was on the table.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign. We are adjourned.[1784.63]